Call to April 3rd, Brookner City Council Meeting to Order. Invitation, I don't think anyone's here tonight for an invocation, so we'll go to roll call.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Please stand and join Vice Mayor Udi in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five is consideration consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from consent agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item J.
Item J, okay. Anything else?
Make, move to approve the consent agenda excluding item J.
Second.
Question second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And on item J, it just, in the comments, it just failed to list the, has the approval of PUD 275, but it failed to mention the abrogation of PUD 29D. So, I would make the motion to approve PUD 275 and the abrogation of PUD 29D.
Second.
Question second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 7A, Public Hearings Appeals Presentations. Presentation update of Transportation Alternative Program, the TAP program, Bill Savanovich.
Good evening. You got it up there?
Do you have a clicker? No.
Can you, can you move it to? We're just, this is just an update on the Main Street Bike Way. This was presented to you way back in September. Scott Esman, the Parks Director, presented it to the council to get your comments on the, on the preliminary plans that they had at that time. This is the final plans that are going to construction. ODOT is planning to bid this in June of this year. One final step that we have is we will be having a public meeting later this month, or early next month. I just want to kind of go over what the, what it is again, just to refresh your memory. Can you keep, keep going? Do you get to the, to the plan sheets? Okay. It begins at 91st Street, Washington Street, and we're going to be restriping Main Street all the way to Kenosha or 71st Street. Presently, it's, it's four to five lanes until you get to the Rose District, and then it's down to just three lanes there. This is going to be a three-lane street. At the very south end, we will have an extra lane for a right turn lane, as you can see on this map here. Next slide, please. Again, we're, we're cutting it down to three lanes, even when we go by the post office where it presently is five lanes. And the outside lanes will be the bike lanes, and they will be colored green. Keep going. Next slide. There will be a alternate route that will come off of Main Street, I think it's at Richmond, yeah, Richmond Street. It'll be going over to Arrowhead Park. Can you go to the next slide, please? These are just showing the route. Keep going. Again, okay. And then it'll go down South Third Street off of Richmond to get to Arrowhead Park. Next slide. At the park, there will be some resurfacing done of the park trail itself. Go on to the next slide. Continuing north on Main Street, it'll be marked for three lanes with the outside being marked for the bike way. It'll be signed all through this whole area. Keep going to the next slide. Once we get past, next slide, once we get past Houston Street, next slide, please. Then we'll go down to a sharrow as we go through the Rose District. We will not be using the green paint in the Rose District. Okay? Continue on. Once we get to the north side of the Rose District, then it will go down to Midway, and the bike way will go down Midway. Continue on, please. All the way over to Fourth Street. And then it goes north to Fourth, from, on Fourth Street to Kenosha, and that's where it'll end. Keep, keep continuing. North of Midway, we're just gonna have it restriped to three lanes, so it will match the rest of the roadway. If you could go back. We will, are going to have an alternate route. One of your comments was to, to not have it go through the downtown. We could not take it out of, out of the plan. If we did, ODOT told us we would lose the funding. So therefore, we decided we would continue having it go through downtown. However, we're also going to have an alternate route which will go down Fort Worth, down First Street, all the way to Midway, and then back onto the, to the plan that, that we have shown you. We haven't got that part completed yet. We're just in the process of designing that right now.
So Bill, when do you think you're gonna, construction will start, and how long do you think it'll take to get all the striping done?
The construction will start probably about 60 days after they receive bids, and they'll receive bids at the end of June. So it'll probably be, it takes about 60 days for ODOT to process the paperwork to get the construction going. It'll probably take anywheres from 30 to, to 60 days to get it completed, maybe even up to 75 days. Because, mainly because of the, of the part we're going into Arrowhead Park. The resurfacing there is gonna take some time to do.
So...
Go ahead.
The, the comments I made previously was Norman has this same type of bike setup.
Yes.
And whatever they used for their adhesive or for their striping, to me, it, it looks faded now.
Okay.
So I wanted, I'm no expert, but that didn't look good. I mean, it reminded me of the original grass turf they put down that has faded.
Faded over time.
Over time, so I certainly don't want to spend the money to do this and then have whatever we put down for an adhesive that fades.
We're using a similar project, product, but not the same product. It's, it's...
That gives me almost no assurance.
Well, our, our consultant is telling us that this product will last, okay?
And is the consultant standing behind the, who's standing behind the product?
I imagine...
Because Alex. It's much like...
Alex.
Well, it's much like reds, and these dark greens tend to, the color is a, tends to fade very quickly. So again, I want it to look nice.
This, this is, this is a product that is approved by ODOT and it's approved by FHWA.
That gives me even less assurance.
But it's, it's the best that we have, I mean...
I understand.
Unless we, we go someplace that's, that's had this product down for 10, 15 years, or seven years or whatever, we don't really know how long it's been.
And before Alex gives me his assurance. What, the comments I had from those that live actually adjoining that in Norman said that the bicyclist still ride on the sidewalk. So what kind of a educational program are we going to, how are we gonna reach out to the bicyclist to actually use this?
Well, that's a fair question, Counsel. The stuff that they used in Norman is, they actually laid the epoxy and then put, and laid the aggregate separately. This product has the aggregate mixed in with the epoxy. Comes in five gallon cans, so it's a little more readily applied, and it actually should hold up, you know, just as well, and it'll be easy for our crew to go out, our Streets and Storm Crew to go out and, and maintain it. It should be less rough because of that. Now, you do want some roughness.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, so, you know, I, I called the city engineer of Norman after your, your comments. They said that they are very happy with the way it's looking and, and, and holding up, and, and he was very surprised by the comment. And I said, "Well..."
Of course.
Our, our counselor was pretty convinced it was fading, and he goes, "Now, we do have some areas that are collecting dirt, and it's perhaps, maybe he saw an area that is simply just dirty. Because of the aggregate they put on it on top, it's actually difficult to clean." And so that is, there, there was one complaint about their product, was it was difficult to clean because it was, it was more raised, and, and you couldn't get a street sweeper on it as easy. So, we think this product is gonna hold up and be easier to maintain and keep clean.
I think they're just jealous of us being, getting more citizens than them in the next few years.
I, I think, I think that's for sure.
But, but the, the, the education of the bicyclists is also, I think, something we need to really...
Well, I'll, I'll work with Scott Esman, and we'll reach out to the user groups and, and see if we can't...
Thank you.
Make them happy.
Didn't mean to...
I have a follow-up question also. You said that, that it's still gonna go down Main Street, the trail is, the bike trail is, but it's not gonna be marked on Main Street. That there's an alternate going down the two other streets. Will that be marked as a bike lane or, or not?
Yeah, we'll, we'll mark that as a bike.
It, it won't be marked as a bike lane, it'll still be a sharrow, just like it would be through the Rose District. It'll have the little emblems on the, on the street, and it'll have signs that say that this is a, a bike way.
Okay, so it'll be an alternate bike way. I'm still concerned, 'cause I know even driving it today, I had trouble getting up and down Main Street. Now, I can still negotiate it, but looking for pedestrians, I still feel like that it's gonna be a little bit too much to look to the back end of a truck that might be parked out too far, and pedestrians, and bicycles. Especially as much as we're open that the bicycle people will use it. So I'm hoping, even though the state might not agree with it going, you know what I mean, right? They want it right through downtown, I think it's gonna cause a traffic problem. So I want to make sure that it's properly marked, the alternate method is, is marked for safety.
We'll mark the alternate path to kind of encourage that, and we'll work with the user groups. And quite frankly, after the project's done, there's nothing to keep us from going and removing marks through the downtown if we, if we...
Okay.
Find they're being problematic.
They should remove that from the tape, but...
Yes.
I wanted to, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that that was the primary, you know what I mean, route. Because I really, I want everybody protected. I really love the downtown, I just don't want it to sit, become, you know what I mean, a bottleneck right there.
Absolutely.
I, I had a follow-up question, too. When you, when you go down and, down to the park, the Arrowhead Park, where it's, where the bike trail is inside the park, is that the same trail that people jog on? Will they be jogging and biking on the same area?
Yeah, yes. I thought that was the answer, I just wanted to get a confirmation.
It would be much like what you see on the Riverwalk, where you have...
Very much like the Riverwalk.
So it would be properly marked where they'll know it's a bicycle lane, or?
Yes, it'll have...
You just have to watch out for bikes?
I think there's a, there's a code, or, like, they know.
I think it's the same thing with the Liberty Park Trail, where you have bicycles and, and joggers and, and dogs, which are really a challenge if you're on a bicycle, but, but, so everyone uses that trail. They just know that you've got it, you're supposed to yield, but sometimes it is, sometimes it don't, so...
Okay, just ask the question.
Maybe we could do a video, and we, and we turn off that alternate way in the video.
Show people how to do it.
When, when will this, 'cause I know that the long-term goal is for this to connect and to go all the way down first, and then up through, by the, the Freshman Academy, up, up and connect to the trailhead.
Yes, sir.
When will the full project be complete?
Those plans are wrapping up very soon, and so we hope to get that bid in short order. I don't know if it'll bid this year or not, but we're really close on those plans.
Okay.
What about snow removal on Main Street where these, this green markings, will, will equipment, excuse me, damage that anyway?
Well, we're hoping that we don't have the same problem that Norman's having, because ours is a, a different version of a similar product where it's thinner. So we're hoping that it doesn't cause snow removal problems. They say it won't.
I'm sorry to ask the question. Thank you.
I understand, sir.
That's all we can do is...
Anything else? Thank you, Bill. Okay, item 7B, Presentation Regarding the Road Closures for Houston in Association for Ninth Street Public Improvement Project. Tim Robbins.
Evening. Tim Robbins, Construction Division Manager, Engineering and Construction Department. Bringing in a notification of a pending road closure, starting next Wednesday, April 11th, and forecasted to last for seven days. The intentions of this road closure will be for installation of storm sewer systems crossing along 81st Street, or Houston if you'd rather. It's going from north to south, just on the, between Eighth Street and Lynn Lane. So what we're intending to do is, due to the extensive of the installation, we will have to go under the roadway a significant portion where we cannot get a flagging system or anything like that. It'd just be prudent to direct traffic around. So what we are proposing to doing is closing off Lynn Lane and at Eighth Street, and just completely closing the road, the road zone in that location, and doing a storm crossing there, as well as along Houston, back to North, Ninth Street, and installing our storm system along there as well. So we're trying to do as much under this road closure as we possibly can. In this, we're gonna be directing traffic back down to the south on Eighth Street, and back into Jackson, and on, back onto Lynn Lane, and up to 81st Street. So we're anticipating this at least for seven days, and then after that, we'll be taking a, a day-by-day analysis. But our, our intentions right now is at seven days. We will be starting going door-to-door, handing out notifications as soon as Thursday for the industrial park, and we'll be requesting that all cars are parked. Right now, you know, it's, it's a, just kind of an industrial zone, so we're gonna go door-to-door and ask for their, their assistance in keeping cars and, and shipping and everything off of the roadways and into their parking lots for the time that we're gonna be directing traffic. Then we'll be media blasting through our Communications Department, just similar to how we've done every other road closure, to get as much publicity out there as possible, let everybody know, so... Any questions?
Any questions of Tim?
Good deal.
Thank you.
Just need to void that area, I guess. Okay, we have item eight, Citizens Opportunity to Address the Council. We have Richard Pisituro.
Evening.
Evening.
Richard Pisituro, 2608 South Cardenia Place, Broken Arrow. Did we ever think of bringing this comedy show to primetime on Halloween? If you can't have fun, that's, I'm with you. Couple items. Rentals. They're becoming a very prevalent thing in our neighborhood, and I'm sure in a lot of neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods. Who is responsible for the maintaining of a rental, the grounds and the house itself?
I would think that the owner would be responsible for that.
Ultimately, it's the owner.
The owner? So if a complaint is filed with the city, you'd have to look up their address to get to them, correct? Because you couldn't send it to the house because the rent is just gonna throw it in the garbage.
Right.
Okay. Another issue, which is, I, and I, you know, I go through neighborhoods. People putting debris on the sides of the houses there for months, wood, metal, it's, it's very unsightly, and, and I don't know, Mike, is that something we could also address in? In, you know, in upkeep of the neighborhood? That people just store stuff there in, in plain sight?
I think it'd be a code enforcement item as far as what can be done.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking. But, but can it be enforced? That's my question.
The, the answer to the question, if I can, on behalf of the council, is yes, and probably the best place to start would, would be with Mr. Skates.
That's no problem.
You know, because what we'd like to do is, is look at an entire area.
Right.
Because what may appear to be a violation may not be a violation.
I understand.
And so the best thing to do is, is let our code enforcement officers go out and take a look.
I understand that, okay. Trash. Now, Good Friday was a holiday. I put trash in every house on my block. Went through the neighborhood, putting up a letter on every door. It's a holiday, no trash till Tuesday. Trash was still there for pickup today. We have laws on the book, we don't enforce them. And it's very unsightly, but especially, and I don't care what denomination, your religious denomination is. Easter Sunday is a religious holiday, and I personally, and my neighbors don't like looking at trash throughout our neighborhoods. Why don't we enforce, because we want to be nice guys? Leo Derosio once said, "Nice guys finish last." We have to, maybe not fine them, but we need to get letters out and tell people, the next time you leave your trash out, before 4 o'clock the day before or all weekend, you're gonna be fined. I will come before you next year, the Lord willing, if I'm still here, and draft a letter for, for you people to look at, Beth Ann, with the city signature on it, and I will personally go through every door and attach it through Wolf Creek. This is every year, and, and it's, it's, it's just not nice. It's ugly. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, General Counsel Business. 9A, Consideration, Discussion, Possible Approval of Resolution Number 1098. Alex?
Good evening, Alex Mills, Engineering and Construction Director. I have you, for you today, a resolution to authorize us to acquire property for fire station number three. This property is 3.03 acres, and it's located on the west side of county line at approximately 115th Street. The city and the seller have determined that the purchase price of $365,000 is a reasonable price for this property, and that's supported by a, a recent fair market appraisal of the property, and we recommend approval. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
Just a couple comments for the mayor and council real quick. Is, is a part of this project, a couple things, is that we, GH2 is the architect, and they have been doing some preliminary work, and once we move forward after tonight, they will be able to, what I would, what I'd call restart or jumpstart the completion of the, the plans and specifications for, for the project. And secondly, is that as a part of this agreement, you know, we need a couple of forms of ingress egress, one for the vehicles to get out of the, the fire station, and then a, another way to get in. And so we will actually be improving the roadway there, that's 114th, I think it is.
115th.
Excuse me, 115th. So we'll be in, we'll be actually improving that road up to our property line. Is, is, that'll be made as a part of this, which I think is, is a good thing. We'll go to our property line, and if there's the potential for development behind there, then that would be the responsibility of the developer. But I want to make sure council was aware, as a part of this agreement, is that we're gonna need to do that because of the, the need for ingress egress.
And I understood you say that the, the purchase price of 365,000 is below the appraisal of the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd make a motion, we approve and authorize execution of Resolution Number 1098.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi? Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, item 9B. Consideration, Discussion, Possible Approval of the Nomination and Appointment of Trevor Swanson to fill Jeff Hartman's unexpired term on Broken Arrow Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Thank you, mayor and council. Before I present this, I wanted to take a moment to introduce you to Brian Barker. He started with the city yesterday as our new Convention Sales and Marketing Manager. He comes to the city with over 30 years of sales experience, and we're really glad to have him on board. So I wanted to put a face with the name, so anytime you're up at City Hall, if you have any questions or you want to get in touch with him, he's gonna be learning about the hotels and meeting facilities, and he's gonna hit the ground running in the next few weeks, so...
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity, I'm very grateful, and I'm excited to work with this team. You've got a great leader, and I got great bosses here, and I'm looking forward to serving the people of the Broken Arrow. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Concerning the Convention and Visitor Bureau, I met with Jeff Hartman last week, and he regretfully informed me that he needed to step down from the CVB. He has a hotel project that's taking place in Tulsa that's taking up a substantial amount of his time, and he's unfortunately had to miss a few of the, the past CVB meetings. And I mentioned this to Mayor Thurman, and, and we discussed some op, potential options to have come in and fill this position. And Ms. Trevor Swanson is the Director of Sales of the Town Place Suites and the Holiday Inn Express. And if nominated this evening and appointed, she will fulfill the unexpired term of Jeff Hartman. That'll expire September 30th, 2019, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Lori?
Make a motion to approve the nomination and appointment of Trevor Swanson to the Brookner Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 10A, Preview Ordinances. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Preview of Ordinance Amending Chapter 23, Traffic Article 2. Norm Stevens.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Norm Stevens, Economic Development Coordinator for the city. What I'm coming before with you, or coming before you with is a change in the ordinance, or a new ordinance for the neighborhood electric vehicles. And the purpose of this is to be driven in the downtown Rose District, District Residential Overlay. I want to draw counsel's memory back to March 15th, 2016. At that time, Wes Smithwick provided a very, very detailed analysis of the Rose District 2.1, or 2.0 document, and went over many of the highlights of it. During that presentation, one of the things he talked about were these neighborhood electric vehicles. And before we move forward with it, as you can tell, it's been two years since he did his presentation, and there's been several implementations of the Rose District 2.0 report. We wanted to make sure that staff all had a chance to weigh in on these neighborhood electric vehicles. And we very, very purposefully wanted to have conversations with the chief of police to discuss it and get some of his input. Three things I want to draw to your attention on these vehicles. One, they shall never operate on any public road within the city where the speed limit exceeds 35 miles per hour. They shall not operate on or cross major arterials such as Kenosha Street, Elm Place, Ninth Street, or Houston. And they shall not operate on any designated bike lane or pedestrian path. Once again, we wanted to have the, the chief of police weigh in, and with council's permission, I'm gonna ask Chief of Police Brandon Berryhill to come up and provide you with an overview from his department's perspective. And then I would like to invite Wes Smithwick, the President and CEO of the Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation, to provide you information about the actual vehicles themselves.
We were presented with the plan, and Sergeant Stephen Garrett, a traffic specialist supervisor, researched the area in which the vehicles are planned to be used in. It's compliant with state law, essentially the Rose District, which was a, a good fit for these type of vehicles. And we've looked at it from all different aspects, and the illegals looked at it, and we endorse the plan as proposed. So I have no issues with it.
Thanks, chief.
Any questions, Brenna?
I'll just start by saying I've been admonished to be quick.
Always.
What we're trying to accomplish here, the, the reason we've recommended this, is trying to just keep enhancing the unique sense of place the Rose District is. And this is, this would add, as we're seeing now, the housing's starting to boom here. There's tremendous demand for housing. There'd be two types of people who would drive these, potentially. People who live down here, to, you know, like me, that should probably be walking, but, you know, the, be able to commute around the Rose District. We also think some businesses would do that, too, to use to, to move around the area. But there, this is simply just to, to provide a new amenity, a green amenity, only within the area of the Rose District Residential Overlay Zone. I think we had some out there this afternoon, and most everybody behind the podium got to see them. I will point out that we had two types out there today, and we, if we can scroll through these, you'll see that this first one is specifically designed from the ground up to be a low-speed neighborhood electric vehicle, which is a NHTSA standard that's, describes that these vehicles cannot weigh more than 3,000 pounds empty. They have to have headlights, turn lamps, turn signals, mirrors, seat belts. They have to go at least 20 miles per hour, but cannot exceed 25 miles per hour, and they cannot operate on a speed, a road with a speed limit greater than 35. So there's a very tight box these things have to fit in. That, that one is a, one that was built from the ground up, that was here today. We can see the next one. That's a similar, different brand, but more of a utility. That's something like maybe the Parks Department might choose... That's something like maybe the parks department might choose to utilize, or somebody downtown hauling stuff around. That one is a golf cart chassis, which you'll see it has seat belts added, it has a windshield, a windshield wiper, it has turn signals and headlights, and so as long as the engine had been worked, right, where it would go at least 20 miles per hour, it would be legal. That one also is on a golf cart chassis, but has a different body that's been added to it. And then there's another one that looks more like, that looks like the ones very similar that we had out here this afternoon that's been made street legal. Yet there's another one that's been, that's actually done in, it looks like Mexico, as a Google security vehicle. So there's all different types of uses for these. There's one that is a six-passenger. We had a four-passenger here today. That's a six-passenger from that same company. So really, we're just trying to build on the unique sense of place of the Rose District. You know, I would point out that these things have to be titled, they have to have a license plate, and they have to have insurance, just like a regular car. So it's, by the federal government standards, it's the same thing as a regular car, except its use is highly regulated geographically, so.
Chief question. So do the drivers of these vehicles fall under the same purview as a normal vehicle for impaired drivers?
Yes. If it's licensed and strictly legal, it's the same rules apply. It's just limited on the speed because of the vehicle itself.
If they cross and go into on Elm Place 71st or 81st, then that's a means that they will be ticketed?
They'll be destroyed immediately.
They may be if they get hit by the right car.
I didn't catch that. I'm glad you didn't get close to those highways.
No, they, they'll be ticketed for that. I mean, you know, the Rose District itself, by nature of the neighborhood makeup and the speed limits, it fits exactly within that area. It'd be hard to do it in some other areas because you've got some roads that go through that the speed limits are higher, so it has to be within that district. So, and being something new, everybody's going to call and complain if they do go outside that box, and so I don't anticipate that being a problem.
So, and if someone decides they, they see one of these, especially ones that look like a golf cart, and think, "Oh, I can drive a golf cart," so then what happens?
Well, that'll be a problem. I mean, that'll be a separate ticket all in and of itself. If people think they can take their golf carts and start driving on the roads, you know, years ago, we had a guy, a mower, used to drive into town because he had a DUI, but I mean, initially, we probably are going to have some issues, people driving their golf carts thinking they can, so that's a public education issue.
Just education, yeah.
Public education.
And on Main Street itself, which is, people, I know the speed limit is reduced, but people don't drive like it is. Will there be education to encourage those who come down Main to, that there are other people on that particular stretch of road?
Well, it, part of the campaign will be to give the rules the road, but I mean, this might actually lower the speeds on Main Street because of these vehicles being out there.
Well, I just didn't know if there'd be some of your fellow officers encouraging people to slow down on Main.
His name is Officer Chambers.
Yes.
Yes, we would have somebody out there. I mean, what we'd do is probably do the public campaign, normally what we would do is we would write some warnings first, give it about a week or two weeks, and then come back in with tickets. I mean, compliance is what we're after, not really writing tickets if you don't have to.
And I would say if passed, you know, my team will work very closely with the police department and Krista on how we educate people, you know, including, it's not a real, not just a plain golf cart, it's beyond that, but it would require education of the public.
Any more questions? Thank you.
My only comment to this would be, it certainly would add to the uniqueness of the Rose District. I'm not sure how handy it would be, but it would be, it would be unique if you wanted to run over to downtown or, you know, something like that. So it would set, again, set the Rose District apart from the rest of the state and the rest of the area. So I'm in favor of it.
Well, and in line with that, I'd make a motion to preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Sweet.
Second?
Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 11, ordinances, 11A, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3523. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. These ordinances have actually not been previewed by council, but we do have some projects that are out there pending, and staff felt like it was appropriate under these particular circumstances to go ahead and place these on for the council's consideration as a final ordinance. The first one makes a variety of revisions to the land subdivision code, and it's always good when staff has an opportunity to explore other trends and, you know, update its codes to make them consistent with, also with federal law. Section 4.1 of the subdivision regulations is proposed to be modified to clarify the distance requirement for stub streets, which require temporary right-of-way for a turnaround. This will bring us into compliance with current codes. It clarifies that the temporary right-of-way for a turnaround is required of the street that connects to the adjacent platted or unplatted property is in excess of 150 feet. That, of course, is going to be measured from the center line of the intersecting street to the property line. The next section is something that, from a staff perspective, we're actually pretty excited about, and I believe that you received earlier a letter from the Home Builders Association that expressed support for this particular proposed revision. You may remember that the current code actually provides that all residences, buildings, and other habitable structures must be set back a minimum of 50 feet from high-pressure pipelines. This particular requirement was passed a number of years ago prior to the United States Department of Transportation taking over regulation of these particular lines. It was originally intended to address transcontinental high-pressure pipelines that were in place. Well, now, the pipelines can be as small as two inches in diameter, and so staff and also national standards seem to indicate that those are much less of a risk. So the change in federal law creates an issue where property becomes undevisible due to the minimum 50-foot setback, and so staff did some research and found that a pipeline size requirement of eight inches or more would continue the intent original of this particular section. The modifications of section 6.2 adds an additional requirement for finished floor elevations. It states that they shall be placed on the floor, the face of the plat. If the lots are connected to a sanitary sewer system, then a backflow prevention table is required on the face of the plat. The legal department is particularly excited about that because, you know, as you know, sanitary sewer backups are costly and smelly. And so if it's on the face of the plat, then that should constitute due notice to individuals that are building residences in that particular area, and gives the city attorney's office an additional defense, I believe, and also should theoretically place people on notice. Sections 4.1 and 6.3 of the subdivision regulations are being proposed to bring the regulations in line with the requirements of the International Fire Code. The planning commission had voted on March 22nd, yes, the 22nd, in favor of these proposed revisions, and so we would request that you adopt ordinance number 3523 and approve the emergency clause. Michael Skates will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I do, I do have a question. On 6.2, we discussed a few years ago, and I guess we never really went forward with that, of requiring all new construction to have backflow preventers. I guess we never went forward with that one, but we're talking about $150 to $250 versus the damage that it does. I know I carry a rider on my insurance in case that happens, I have a backflow preventer, but I think it would, I thought we had adopted that, so is that something you're aware of, or?
Yes, you're correct. We did adopt that, and it has a height elevation of the finished floor being a foot above the nearest manhole, but what we're trying to do here is trying to get that information actually put on the plat. We require it, but not all consultants are working to put that on the plats, so our goal is to get that shown on the plats.
What I'm thinking is we had required all, so it wouldn't really even matter, because every single house that was brand-new would have to have one on new construction, and that way it would alleviate the need for a table to say, because if everyone had it, but that would solve some problems, because even if you're not, you know, you get some kind of backup somewhere, and, you know, the manhole lid would usually come off from the pressure, but if somebody has put something on top of that and it doesn't, you know, we've had that happen in some cases where, so I think, I thought we had adopted that at some point, so.
I would double-check that.
Yeah, so that way, you wouldn't even need a table if you just required everyone to put one on, because.
Right. The other part of that was just making sure that the finished floors are shown on the plats.
Finished floor, I understand, the finished floor and the plat, but I think it, look into that, because I do think we've adopted that, and if not, we probably, we probably should make sure that we make that ordinance, because that would save people a lot of heartache from having sewer backup on everything new.
And it's a minimal expense, you know, when it's, when it's done, and also later on, it saves confusion because the general public doesn't really realize what you're talking about 10 years down the road, when you start talking about, well, you've got to go with this elevation and go there.
Right.
And if they just know there's a check valve, that there's a valve in there. So I think that's, I think that's good.
If you have that valve, and I think they're probably 150, you know, during new construction, that's about all you're going to spend, and the amount you'd spend if you ever had a problem. But I know we have had at least one incident where someone has buried a manhole, and so even though that, they weren't a foot below the downstream manhole, they, you know, it still flooded the house because the lid wouldn't come off. So we could solve that by requiring that, I think.
Having, I agree with all that. I also do like having the section point, 6.2 as it is, being amended here, because constructive notice also reduces the, if even notwithstanding all of that, if someone has this, it again adds another level of liability protection. So I think we need, in my opinion, we need both. We need the amendment here as well as the blanket requirement, so.
If we have the requirements, we don't really need a table, you do need a finished floor on the plat, so, but we can talk about that once we research that, but we, I think we should look at that.
Well, the finished floor wouldn't have anything to do with, you had a backflow preventer.
Yeah, everyone had to have them.
Everyone had to have one anyway.
You wouldn't need a table, so every new plat, it'd be required as part of the inspection, so.
I have a question on the 4.2 here, and just for clarification. What it's saying that it makes a difference of what size of high-pressure line it is, is that correct?
Yes.
And that cutoff is eight inches?
Yes.
So if it's larger than that, it'd still be 50 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
From the center line of the pipe.
Right. If it's larger than the eight inches?
Yes.
Okay. And then if it's smaller?
If it's smaller, then you can be closer than the 50 feet.
And how close?
25, I think, is that the code?
Is that what it says?
Well, just outside their easement.
Okay, most easements are 50 feet.
Just outside their easement, okay.
We have some roadway projects where there are some gas lines that are less than eight inches that are pending this change, you know, from the federal government, and then our change that we're recommending, and, you know, that utility may be relocated just outside the right-of-way net, an adjacent 17 and a half foot utility easement, so it may be down to that.
That's the way I understood it. I just want to make sure that was the way that we was looking at there.
Yes. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 3523.
Second?
I have a question, then. If, back to this 6.2, that's something you're going to look at, and is that going to be modified? We have to come back into ordinance with that, or?
It would have to go back before planning commission anyway, and if you elect to move forward with adoption of the ordinance as is, we do have a couple of developments that are kind of hanging out there as a result of these revisions, so I guess my request would be if you would go forward with this. I will get together, Trevor and I will get together with Mr. Skates first thing tomorrow, see if we can get that, we'll get that information to council, and then if it hasn't been done, we'll start the process immediately.
And just add the change in later on.
And then we would amend 6.2, so we wouldn't need a backflow preventer.
Again, the constructive notice item's a big issue. I don't, when it comes to liability, that's one another way, so in the absence of whatever we do in the future, this needs to be done now, in my opinion.
And I think, and we do have a motion and a second to do it this way.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 11B, consideration discussion, possible, emergency clause, sorry.
Make a motion, emergency clause.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll do 11B, consideration discussion, possible adoption, ordinance number 3524. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Modifications to the Broken Arrow zoning code are being proposed to bring the requirements regarding residential connectivity in line with the requirements of the International Fire Code, and it does go into some detail about doing that. One of the modifications addresses, removes section 5.3b5, and where, I mean, basically the entirety of the changes are being updated in order to bring it into compliance with the code. And so I'll be, I don't know, Mr. Skates can answer any specific questions about that, but it's fairly standard in terms of what we normally do.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 3524.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Any remarks and inquiries by governing body members? Any remarks or inquiries?
I just realized tomorrow's my one year on the council, and I just want to thank all of you guys and the staff for helping me through this year. It's been educational and enjoyable, and I'm looking forward to the next three years, so.
We still haven't received that first new member cookies, though.
It's in the mail. Oh, wait, yeah.
Scott, Ed brought yours either. I don't know what you're laughing about.
And don't hold on to it. Don't, don't, don't plan on it either.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to, and glad that you're here, Deborah.
Thanks.
Move on to item 13, remarks and updates by city manager. Michael, what do you think?
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of council, and all those in attendance. Just a few things. First off, let me thank Mr. Piscatero for those comments. I mean, code enforcement, obviously, if you drive around our city, it's hard to find properties that are not in compliance, I mean, that are, that are, yes, not in compliance, although there are some, and so, I mean, we do take it very seriously, so if there are issues, Mr. Skates and his team will go out and we'll take a look. Obviously, we like to do the entire area, so we will follow up. And I do agree that we can do a better job of providing more education about when it's going to be holiday, and so we'll work with, we'll work together to, with communications to make sure we try to put out as much information we can about the fact that it's not going to be a collection day. I think, I think we do a good job, however, we can, we can do better, and that fine line between enforcing and providing more education is, I would rather try that route first before going out and doing any enforcement. Just a few things. Well, I have Mr. Smithwick here. I want to mention that we are looking at putting new banners on the poles in the Rose District, and so you'll probably see some of those banners being tried out, making sure that they, the poles will hold them and so forth, and it's something the city's going to invest in, and these are going to be a different type of banner that actually is going to get some more life out of those banners, so I'm excited about, about, once again, making sure we have that uniqueness that goes along with, with our Rose District. And I want to thank Wes, because his team is actually spearheading the type of banners that we're going to be using. Last week, we had a great competency plan update, public forum, well over 150 people in my opinion were in attendance, great, open house-type atmosphere, a lot of good questions. I think the folks were very impressed with the data that was presented by our consultant that's looking at 101st and Elm and working with our consultant. So that's the first of four public meetings, there's going to be three more, and I want to thank the council for participating in that. A couple other items, we're working on the budget, and we're going to get that to you in the early part of May, give council plenty of time to go through the fiscal year 19 budget. And I want to thank the council for participating in that. A couple of other items that we're working on the budget and we're going to get that to you in the early part of May, give council plenty of time to go through the fiscal year 19 budget. And then finally, just a quick update on the general obligation bond package, where we are in the process. At your next meeting, the council is going to receive a presentation just to give you a preview of where we are in terms of the projects. You're going to get the actual documentation, we're going to be talking about on the 17th, a week from tomorrow, on Wednesday, to basically give you a full week to go through that. And you'll see that there are projects that are still above the cut line and then there's those projects that are below the cut line. And just a quick preview, in that first meeting in January, the council looked at $285 million of the projects and that was reduced, that date about 280. And right now, we're just under 220 million. I left a number of projects above the cut line. The goal is to get under, under 210 million. So there's still going to have to be some, some decisions made by the council regarding getting under there. But I wanted to make sure that there are some of those projects that are what I believe right on the edge that need to be looked at. So your input on the 17th and then the public forum, the special meeting on Monday, the 23rd, is going to be the last opportunity before council actually discusses it again in terms of the resolution and the ordinance, calling for the election and finalizing the projects, which could, will be the second, shooting for the second meeting in May. So really about 45 days away from, from knowing exactly what those projects are going to be. Had a little focus group last week of some citizens who got their input along with the superintendent of schools from Broken Arrow Public Schools and the chamber president and CEO. So we got some input about some of the projects that was very helpful to us. So I'm looking forward to getting that information to you all because obviously you have to make the final decision on what goes before the voters. But we're very excited to present this comprehensive package to you. The format on the 23rd will be the council, the mayor will welcome everyone, each council member will have the opportunity to address the group. And then I will give a presentation. And my presentation's going to be a little bit longer this time and we'll conclude with the open house. But I want to take the opportunity on behalf of the council to remind folks that they've already approved projects in 2011 and 2014 bond and that there's going to be a lot of work coming in the next couple of years. And we're going to just remind folks of those projects, show some pictures and say, this is what you have approved and here's what we're doing and here's what we're leading up and asking for your support on. And sometimes when you get wrapped up in this, folks have a tendency not to remember that they've already committed funds to do these projects. We want to just kind of show how, everything's going to dovetail together. It's council member Wimpy's turn up for take five and so she's going to, to actually do the meeting, the take five before the meeting on the 23rd. And then it'll be the mayor's turn to actually talk about the council's responsibility now that the public's weighed in. So we're, we're, council's heavily involved in this process, just going in the order right down the line, leading up to you all making that decision in the second meeting in May. So I like to use every opportunity to let the public know exactly what we're doing and try to be as transparent as possible with, with what's happened. A lot of good feedback. You've gotten some emails, I've been trying to answer some of those emails to, to folks about the package, how it's going to be done, why we're doing it this way, what was chosen. Because I think it's important that we respond to that, those, those questions to let them know that we're, we're being responsive and that we care about their questions.[1685.75]